Maybe, um, I district finances, I don't know if this is gonna be a long discussion or a short one, but I'll still open it, I'll still open it up.
This is another one of those things where I didn't feel like I had appropriate intel to really feel super strongly one way or the other. I feel like the overall consensus is that fiscally, we're not specifically thriving.
We're doing okay.
Okay.
We are doing okay and, um, you know, I think that does not mean we won't have reductions that will need to be made. But when you have declining enrollment, you can't help but be, you know, Laura said something to that effect earlier. You know, that's just a fact.
Yep.
It's hard to predict the future.
I think failure to pass, we, we have an operating levy, but we got really lucky this year in terms of, we didn't have to go out for that. Would we have passed it? I'd like to think yes. Historically, those have passed well, um, but people like to know where their money has been spent. So I guess we don't know about that one.
I would, I would just add really expensive to, first of all, it's expensive to run a small school district, right? Because you, you don't have a choice of what you can off, sometimes you have to offer. If I have a class of, of eight, um, in second grade, I gotta, I gotta offer a second grade class somehow. So, small school districts in general struggle and then, um, and then it's just really expensive when you're operating two, two buildings.
Right.
Um, when you don't have, you know, when your enrollment isn't where you want it to be. So just, just putting those two things on the table, not even counting anything else, it's expensive.
True.
Um, and, and then if you add declining enrollment over time, that's, that's gonna be a struggle. I agree. I think we're doing okay right now. Um, preparing for the future is what you guys are talking about. So make sure we don't wait too long.
Do we have an idea? Like, do, is there, I know with accountants, there are spreadsheets out there that'll say, you know, you're anticipating this for the next three years, whether it's growth or decline, do we know? Like, we have that, do we have that spreadsheet where we're like, okay, we declined by five students for the next three years. This is where we're kind of be sitting.
I can come, I can get that. I can just tell you, you know, we, we put a spreadsheet, um, together that, that just basically says enrollment for every grade level, right?
Right.
And so what happens is, is when you're, when you're, if you've got higher enrollment in ninth, tenth, eleventh, and twelve, you're looking at your kindergarten class coming in, right? And if those numbers are lower, you know over time, they're really declining. So I would say that's, you know, that we have. Um, that becomes pretty clear. We've got a pretty nice, um, preschool classroom. We've got two classes of preschool kids. So that's, that's optimistic for us, that we can turn it around a little bit and have some younger ones coming through the system. So, so we're happy about that. But, um, we're pretty small, so it would take a lot of kids to, to feel confident financially in the future. Um, yeah.
You know, one of the things we did not talk about in the one building facilities, and I'm really surprised I didn't say it, but, I mean, I don't think there's any getting around in terms of finances either, that our two facilities in a district of this size, having two facilities is just a, it, it's just awful. I can't even tell you.
Yep.
It, it's really, it's just such a conundrum for us. Really, over time, it's just proven to be an obitross we can't get away from. And it's truly unfortunate in so many ways.
Is there a way to calculate operating, again, this is me and my counting ideas, um, to operating, to calculate an operating cost based on square footage to figure out like, you know, like we said, the elementary is probably pretty efficient now with all the new lighting and the new heating system and all that kind of stuff that they've put in. But here, I mean, do we know? Do we know how much more it's costing us to run this building than a normal up-to-date building? Because right now, like, you know, there's very drafty windows and it's ninety in one room and forty in the other. So how do we figure that out so that we?
Well, I don't, I don't know that we have current numbers, but we've gotten those numbers that I would say what, various times over the years.
I feel like that conversation just kind of chases our tail to some degree anyways.
Maggie's telling, it's not efficient.
Right.
It's not efficient.
We know it's not efficient.
Like, how inefficient, how inefficient?
The most inefficient.
And I don't, I mean, is that, yeah, I, I tend to agree that that's just kind of chasing our tails on that one too, but.
I think at the end of the day, whether consolidation is the answer or the K through twelve Justin Carlton, this building was kind of obsolete from either one of those conversations anyways.
It, it really, it really.
Highlighting all the spaces in which this place is inefficient.
I know, but we still have kids here. We don't know how long we'll be here. That's the part I struggle with.
I, I don't disagree with that.
I want to give them stuff. I want to give them the, the things they need to feel successful. Because part of being in a building is your environment.
Sure.
Like, if my office is cold, I'm not as productive. My fingers are cold.
Sure.
Right? And they need that because they're here and they're, and they're here today and they're here for the rest of the school year and they're here next year.
Yep.
And until we make a decision or until something changes, they're here. So.
And overall, instead of playing devil's advocate to that, I think at the end of, well, I genuinely feel like at the end of the day, this is just kind of a ticking time bomb in terms of how long we are providing care to children within this facility. So at that point, instead of us looking for rational answers that are gonna help us not two years from now, but ten years from now, I think that's just more a, a better representation of our time if we're gonna be getting together. Instead of splitting hairs about the different colored lights in here and the drafty windows, like, I think we all get it. Let's figure out what we can do to move on from this facility and make sure our children thrive in a safe and happy environment. That's all I'm saying with that.
Let's do it.
Let's go.
Well, that looks like I don't know, but let's do it.
Uh, okay.
People like numbers. That's all I was getting at.
So, I mean, I don't know how many are on here, but I have to say that we've probably hit more than ninety percent in terms of checking the phone.
Boom, boom, boom.
Um, so, you know, I, I, I'm not sure if, if people are prepared to do this tonight and I really didn't warn you. It's not on purpose, but I just, I think we need to talk about, um, if we're still at the same place that we were at in July. Maybe Ryan can't, but I think we know, he can, you can add.
I feel like I have feelings and insight in regards to it.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, I mean, the entire time, if I'm being honest, I would have been in, in support of anything that would have promoted consolidation. One location, seven locations, let's figure out how to consolidate everything and, you know, kind of spearhead that operation. In my own head, especially after visiting Renshall, I think that kind of validated it for me. And then from the standpoint of like community pride and like wanting to have a building, I think that having elementary, you know, consolidating in my own thought process, kind of doing away with the one location ideation and sending from the Carlton-Renshall area, all of the elementary age kids to South Terrace. And then instead of them coming here, once they hit sixth grade, seventh grade, we can talk about the semantics later, then we utilize the Renshall building at that point in time and that becomes like the, the consolidated high school. Whereas we have a building, they have a building, this place is obsolete. Um, at which point in time, we've then kind of checked the box in some sense of the word of consolidation. And we can discuss what that looks like from a one location standpoint going forward. Whether that's building a school, whether that's renovating one that's big enough to house everybody. I feel like from not only like a fiscal perspective, but a pride perspective too. I think that go from our constituents, the folks that, you know, voted us in, there's some folks that have tremendous pride specific to Carlton. And, um, I think losing a building is a big part of that narrative that makes some of those folks avoid into consolidation. Um, this scratches both of those horns in my estimation. It utilizes two buildings rationally and appropriately. And now all of a sudden, we're, we're gen- genuinely being active in terms of an actual consolidation. And maybe we revisit a conversation down the road for a different location. But I think utilizing two rational, welcoming, good locations would be helpful for not only the students, but the community members that have feelings and emotions about it that go beyond just our, our students. And, uh, I feel like I'd be remiss if I didn't really kind of communicate that. I, I had folks that came out and vote for me. I wish it would have been a few more, but, uh, at the end of the day, I, I feel like that's, that's not only who I feel like I need to be speaking for, but I agree with that thought process myself.
If I could just add something too, I think there's a misconception out there that, correct me if you guys think I'm wrong about this, but this was what I, guess I felt when I first started, that when there was a talk about one, one site, it wasn't anybody thinking that we were just gonna move to one site. We're just gonna build a building or we're just gonna move to one site. It was more about, I can't have this conversation again unless we have two communities agree that one site is really important. We, we, I think we all knew that we weren't gonna be able to just move to one site, that there was gonna have to be some kind of transition period in between. Because I've heard that several times, well, you know, you can't just get to one site. You know, I, I, I'm always defending the board by saying that's not what the intention originally was. The intent was to say, before we do this again, because, because what I understand is for the last fifty years, there's been contention between where is that one site gonna be and is, if there was gonna be one site. And so, um, I think just the fact that we got two boards to say, yeah, it really does make sense that there's one site. It, it kind of makes sense that it's at South Terrace. That's gonna come down the line because you gotta vote on it anyways. But, um, that's, I guess that was kind of what I was thinking. And I do think there was a misconception out there that anybody thought this board thought that that was just gonna happen tomorrow, you know? You guys, you did, you agree?
I don't think there's any way for it to happen in the first phases. And it may not even be, um, a Carlton, you know, it's, it, really, it should be a joint board of not,
Yes.
you know, three, three and three, something like that, that looks long-term at that. Now, uh, do I think that consolidation with one site ultimately is still the best option? Yeah, I do. Um, but getting there is, is a process, you know?
I think it was more about fifty years of not being able to agree on something.
Yeah.
Um, that finally, you know, we, we kind of agreed on something. I thought that was the first, that was a really good first step. You know, that, that there was some agreement, that that was an important piece to the next step.
So, anybody else comfortable in talking about where you are?
My position hasn't changed. I, you know, if, if we do the salvation of one site, I, I do think that, I feel that we have more community support than we did before. Why? Because I think when we met, talked about the K, the tuition agreement, and ultimately that failed, I think it opened a lot of people's eyes to that, like, holy crap, that, that was close.
We gotta do something.
We almost, you know, we were gonna lose the high school.
Which the high school's gonna go away anyway.
Right.
Pretty good, no matter, if there's any scenario, this building is probably not.
No, I, yeah, but I mean, but I mean, the kids, the kids are gonna leave and we're not, we would never get that back.
Sam, can you explain, like, when you say, um, that you ultimately, one site, one site in three years with consolidation? And one site for consolidation and then a one site in five years? Like, what does that feel like to you?
That's a good question.
Cause it's like, it's different, it's different for everybody. And I, I just, I'm curious to know where you're coming at. Do you expect, I just think like right away, like, if we're consolidating, we sign the agreement, we're building a new site. It's different than three years or five years down the road.
Well, I think sooner than later.
I don't think we can, I don't think either district can afford to wait three to five years for one site. You look at the financial piece of things, of turning the lights on, two, two different schools. And just imagine if you had two houses, two payments, turning the lights on. And also the biggest thing is for, for us, with two schools and, and Donita, you can probably attest to this, is the multiple hats our people have to wear. We've got people wearing multiple hats down in elementary because we have to have this person here or vice versa. We're gonna run into that same type of situation, having two sites, Renshall, Carlton. And you need these people at both of these facilities. And it's starting to become very tugging and pulling. Where, where is your time supposed to be? You really want, you know you have to be here, but then yet, now you have to be here because there's something bigger, better that came up. Or I feel about that piece of things too, is that that does impact, it impacts our teachers, our retention, the stress level. Um, so I get concerned with if we don't figure that plan out, then we're just, we're here where we're at right now, sitting here talking about the stress. I just.
I agree with that. I, I, I think that if, if both places decide yes or consolidate, it happens. This play, the high school closes, South Terrace is K, high school is Renshall. It, it didn't change anything. You still have, you still have double the bills. You still have, you know, we're doubling up or not. It didn't change.
It's.
Well, at that point, isn't it two versus three buildings though?
Right.
But, I mean, as opposed to a.
We've been trying to get to two buildings here.
Sure.
For so long.
Right.
You see the financial impact.
I think as soon, as soon as it, as soon as it happens and, and it's agreed on the consolidate, I think as soon as we can, we should start.
Well, and ultimately, it's gonna be what you can, what you can pass.
Right.
So you're gonna start. I would think you'd wanna start right away because it might take you a while to convince your community to pass.
So, so here's a couple thoughts.
What did he say?
Tomorrow. I don't, I don't disagree that one site is ultimate goal, like, at some point down the road. But I, I do disagree, or I guess I have a couple points to make. I think that it's important, if the consolidation happens, we're going from three buildings to two buildings. And as we all know, this is the most inefficient, expensive building to run. And if, if, if Renshall's not, of the three of them, we're saving costs right there. We're also saving costs because we're not having two sets of high school teachers. We're combining it to one set of high school teachers, right? And that may look different. There may be things that go along with that, but we're also increasing our enrollments, right?
You know how I think about it? Is like in Carlton, we have two schools, Renshall has one, and then at any time we start, I mean, like you mentioning, we have three, we have three, no, we don't. We have two that we need to worry about right here and right now. And we've been trying to get to one because we see the financial piece of running two schools.
And I get that.
We see the stress that goes on the teachers and the retention and that impacts the students.
Right.
I don't see, how is that going to change? Even if we get rid of cloak or, or this high school, Carlton High School, and you have Renshall High School and then Elementary, we're, we Carlton are still in that same position.
Can I maybe get some clarification? I guess I'm curious. So theoretically, we, we consolidate. Now, all of a sudden, I'd, I'd like to anticipate that our state funding goes up because our enrollment goes up. We are now, instead of two districts, we're one district, yeah? So our funding would go up, whether that's double, I don't know the exact numbers in terms of enrollment. Doesn't that give us a little bit of flexibility to hire within those same buildings, the, the people that we need at that point in time? So instead of having one guidance counselor for two locations, doesn't that increase in state funding after consolidation give us the ability to hire a guidance counselor at both locations? Instead of watching them go back and forth and back and forth?
The one thing that I'm going to do right now is to pull us back a little bit. Because right now, we're all, I feel, talking in hypotheticals. They're theoretical. We do not have numbers in front of us. We have what we think is going to happen. I know that when you start to talk about, um, the details of a consolidation, those things shift and change. And the Carlton's board, Carlton, our board, and Renshall, that's their thing. We have to understand that it is the best and make our decisions accordingly, um, with what we think it is, with the best information that we can get, right?
Our financial advisor will be able to answer all those questions.
So, what I'm, what I wanna get us down to tonight is, do we want, are we ready to say to Donita, let's get Ellers on this? Let's start to look at this. Let's, let's put consolidation with Renshall or talk to Renshall. You know, that's maybe the first thing, talk to them. Are they still even interested? You know, is the dance card full yet or do we have an option? But, you know, one of the things that we haven't looked at and we can't speak to is whether or not, and, you know, fiscally, it's prudent for us to, uh, to do that. Is it, is it prudent? What are we looking at? Uh, we don't have that information in front of us. And that's what I mean when I say that consolidation is really a hypothetical. We'd like that to be the response. We think that that is probably gonna be the best solution for a district. But I think we also have to be open to the data that's coming through to us so that we are not engaging in confirmation bias. Um, and that's really difficult to do, especially when it's your kids that are involved.
Oh, you're right.
I, I speak from experience on that. It's really tough. But, I mean, I, I think this is a great, this is a great board. I, I think you guys are, um, doing really a great job in terms of thinking things through and, and saying what you think. Are we ready to, to have Donita maybe step forward?
You can. I know we're not going to, we'll be here till midnight if we went through the rest of this. But I notice you have something highlighted and I have something highlighted that I wasn't aware of. It's on page.
Wide open. Uh, you, go ahead. That's what this is about.
It's on page fifteen. And it's number five. And it's one thing that I always worried about in consolidating.
I can read that.
You highlighted it too.
Sure.
Way to go.
What do you know?
Cause I was worried about the taxpayers, of course. And it says that typically, most consolidation or combination plans call for pre-existing school districts to pay off their own existing debt.
Yeah. Yeah.
That is true.
It is true.
And then there was also another piece, you may have hit a highlight on more of this.
Which page are we looking at?
Well, I don't know, but it was, that we would receive three hundred dollars.
I saw that too.
But this was way back at two thousand and eleven. It's more by now.
But those are, those are things that somebody like Ellers, if we.
Yeah.
If we give Donita the nod, um, you know, the first thing would, would see whether or not they wanna talk to us.
Would they be able to be the ones to speak on number eleven of the last time it was win out and it was rejected? I know we had a brief, but, you know, it says inadequate and/or proposed combination appeared to be educationally unsound and unstable. So as the commissioner, ever not approve the reorganization plan under consolidation operations and combinations through dissolution and attachment. When I read that, I would, I would, I didn't, and I said this before, it would really be nice to have maybe reading guides on specifics as to why the state, I mean, this is kind of a general statement to me?
I don't know.
Or is that all we have?
Yeah.
To go off of? Or is there like a very specific educationally unsound reasons? Or were there specific instability reasons that the state gave? So we could try to figure that out before we move forward. Otherwise, it's gonna fail again.
But we would, we would find that out as we would start to talk to MDE if they looked at two districts and Ellers.
They would tell us those things, like, hey, this is the same thing that you.
I could, I could find out. See if I could find out, but one thing I would say is, even if we did, something to remember would be whatever they told us five years ago could very well be different today.
No, and I agree with that. I, I totally can understand that, but it would be nice to know if some of those would still be reasons for them. I did ask the question, this is just FYI for you guys, I did ask the question about, in general, does MDE want to see districts consolidate? Small. It doesn't happen often. And the answer was yes.
Of course they do.
Right. So we, we kind of knew that, but we wanted to, I just wanted somebody to say it out loud, that, that they wanna be yes people, right? More than they wanna say no. So I'll look into that, see if I can find out if anybody's got some information on that. If they had anything specific there, that would be around that number eleven there. And yeah, I was looking at, there's, what is the last one? Was two thousand seventeen that was consolidated in the state Minnesota?
The last districts?
Yeah. Was it right around two thousand seventeen?
We don't really know. I mean, there was a lot going on up in the Iron Range.
Yeah.
I, I guess I don't know the answer to the question.
Well, Rockbridge wasn't that long ago, was it? Was it Rockbridge? I don't know.
But I, you know, I do think it's important to recognize that a lot of those districts too, it, it takes them a long time to really hash out the details. And it isn't, um, it's a me, it's messy business. Uh, you know, there's a lot, there's a lot that goes into it. And, um, that doesn't mean we don't take a good hard look at it. I mean, if we wanna be effective here, I think.
Effective, yes.
Effective, yes. And careful, you know?
My vote for Donita will be through with Ellers.
Okay, but we're not voting.
Okay.
Can I sneeze something in there quick?
I, if you, anything, anything else with respect, yeah, I would like people to.
She had brought it up and one of these I find to be wildly more important than the other one. But I did suggest like kind of looking into some of these, whether it's Moose Lake, Willow River, whether it's Rockridge, some of these places that are close enough by us to really kind of get our finger on the pulse in terms of what those challenges were. How, how did this kind of go through? Um, one of the big things that I liked about this packet is it actually went through steps, which were things that I obviously wasn't wildly coherent of. But there was one thing that actually stuck out to me and I felt like, in the same vein of the discussion that we had earlier in regards to that gray area or people kind of flying the coop in that flight or fight dynamic, is number three on here is continuously, continuously providing information to parents, citizens, staff and students. And I highlight that whole thing. Um, Donita and Laura and Sue actually saw me at, on the district advisory board. And I thought that was one of the biggest areas of need with the Carlton School District as I felt like there has been a lack of transparency to some degree. I don't think it's wildly intentional, but I do think if some of these conversations, if some of where we were at was kind of, you know, presented to the masses, there'd be less curiosity as to where we're at. I have talked to a lot of people over the last couple of years and there's been a narrative like, oh, Carlton's still open? Carlton's not closing? And it's like, no, far from it, you know? Whereas I do feel like, is, if, if we were out there and if we were getting some of this information to parents and we were showing what those efforts look like outside of just what we'd like everybody to see, um, I do feel like our community members would feel a little bit more abreast of what's going on. They'd feel a little bit more confident that they have a finger on the pulse. Um, and I do think, regardless of how we have or haven't done, that we can do better with that. And I feel like that would provide some mental comfortability for some of the folks here making decisions based on their children's future education.
Definitely.
So however this lands, I do think that that's a bigger conversation that I think we should be pretty intentional about going forward so there's not a lot of curiosity.
Yeah.
All right, now I'm done.
No, it's an excellent point. And I, I think much of what it says in that, in those back pages talks about that.
It does, and that's, I.
And, um, that has been, that has been something that we've harped on for quite, quite a long time.
Sure.
I responded to a couple emails, um, with kind of that same thing. As soon as, as soon as we know something to share.
Sure.
We will start with that. And I do believe we'll be really good at that when there's something to share.
Understood.
And I think we're getting really close. Yeah.
I just saw it. It rang true.
You're absolute, and, and I, I could not possibly agree with you more because we, the, the people in the district need to have a buy-in. And again, that's not us being effective if that's not, we're not paying attention to it.
Right.
And making sure it's communicated. There's a lot in those back few pages that talk about making sure that the, the, um, community.
Community, student, staff.
Community, students, staff, absolutely.
Yep.
It's a very good point.
Thank you, Donita, for finding this document.
Seriously.
It's a good first start for all of us to have a conversation.
Yeah, I'm looking at you.
Why?
Because I wanna hear more from this end of the table.
I, I thought more about Laura's question to me and, I understand that for some portion of time, we might need to utilize both schools. But I think very early on, it needs to be established, how soon are we going, are we going to be building this new school? I agree with that. If, if that goes, if that doesn't happen, I, I can foresee us having two buildings for a long, long, long time.
Fifty years.
And it's like, yeah, maybe.
Well, I do have, I do have a thought. I mean, my own thought about that, um, you know, I, I think, um, I think that when they're in two buildings, if Carlton and Renshall were to stay as small as they are combined, those realities would become very clear very quickly, that it is far less efficient to have two buildings in a district of this size. And so it'll, it, we can plan, you know, we can try to say we have a strategic plan. So in one year, we wanna be fully integrated, uh, two sites. In three years, we wanna be going out to the community. One thing I will say is that, uh, and I think Ryan maybe touched on it. I, I see, um, so much community support building around the Raptors combined, that I think when the consolidation happens, that I'd like to think that that builds some community pride back in a combined district. And when that happens, you do have a possibility of passing one site, right? Right now, if we went out for one site, just Carlton by ourselves, we'd get. Right now, if we went out for one site as Carlton by ourselves, we'd get probably pounced on worse than we did in two thousand seventeen. Right? Renshaw would have the same problem. I don't see us ever being able to just get into one facility right out of the gate. And we can sure try to say we, and put it in writing, that we really think that what needs to go forward is a plan for one site. But I, for me, it's, it's not right away. It, it, we can say that that's what we think it is. But I think a combined board then maybe makes that decision once they've had an opportunity to see what it looks like merged. I don't know, it's our decision. Like, we can try to put the parameters on it, but I don't, I don't know that that's, ultimately, the community has to say, if you, if we don't have community support, we will never get to one site, combined or not. So my concern is, or I guess, I don't even see it as a concern, but as, as I consider it, and you know I'm a one site, I believe wholeheartedly in one site. And I believe that the best site is at Self-Terris. For the sheer fact of the size, what's available and what could be there. But that may not be up to me. And I gotta be okay with that. What I feel like I need to make sure right now is that what we decide right now is what's best for this Carlton School District. Financially, you know, is this the best idea for us? And the only way that we get there is to actually say we're gonna look at the numbers. We gotta see if Renshaw, of course, still wants to talk. And then, that's where, that's where I'm at. So one site, yeah, absolutely, I'd like to do that. I also understand the realities of potentially getting to one site, sure.
I agree with Julianne. I think that, I think it's hard for us, we can say one site, but then like, that's what I kind of asked. Because I'm like, okay, as a board, if we consolidate, we don't have any control anymore. It's this new board of three and three, right? That's gonna ultimately make, make that decision. And, and I would, I would hope that that's what their, their plan is, whoever serves on that board. But again, like Julianne said, we can't pass, get a one site here for just Carlton. I'm, I'm assuming, my assumption would be, it's probably not gonna happen the first time either with Renshaw. But maybe, maybe we'll get the second time and maybe we'll grow. I don't know, but I agree with Julianne.
So I'm hearing consensus around a couple of things. Uh, please tell me if I'm not correct. I'm hearing consensus around maybe Danita reaching out to a superintendent at Renshaw and just seeing where they're at. And then, are we ready to get around some consensus around Danita reaching out to Ellers?
Yes.
To start preliminary?
And would you like to see that?
Are you nodding or shaking your head?
I, I don't, I don't know. Why would we involve Ellers right away?
We don't have to. I mean, we need to know what the answer, she isn't gonna call Ellers if, you know, if there's no, nothing to talk about anymore, then, then.
I think Ellers is, the, the idea behind Ellers is they're, as the financial, as our financial advisor, they would look into what are our finances look like? Well, how much is it gonna cost us? What's gonna happen when we consolidate? They're gonna come back with whether or not this is a good idea financially or not. And I, before you can make a decision about moving forward, I think you have to have those numbers.
Wouldn't we want Renshaw's numbers in that as well, though? Because I mean, you look at the financial piece of things, if, if we're looking good financially to move forward, a lot of, a lot of, we deserve to know that.
A lot of that is all public, right? It's all public. So what I, I guess what I would say is, I think the next step is for me to, to at least involve Ellers to say, hey, this is what we're doing, what is the, how can you help us? And I would guess they would have to do that. I would guess a lot of that's public. Maybe they'll say, you know, we're not gonna do anything unless you get the two boards together and we'll do it together. Then, then that's what we do. But they, this is kind of what they do, you know? So this, if that's the direction you wanna go in, I think that's, I don't think you can move forward until you've got some numbers in front of you.
I agree.
Yep.
Yeah, and the other thing, you know, just because it's really what we've been following. The other thing that I just wanna make sure is that, and I am hearing that as a board, generally speaking, you want to bring at least for the time being consolidation back to the table. Consolidation with Renshaw back to the table. See nodding? Okay, that's consensus.
If they're willing to talk to us and about it, and they're willing to share their financials, I think that's a big step.
Okay.
I agree.
I mean, we ran into a hurdle, we ran into a hurdle the last time.
Yes, we did. Yes, they didn't, there was a reluctance to share financials.
And I think having somebody, a financial advisor, help everybody with that. They know more about all of that than probably any of us sitting at the table, right? They're gonna be able to talk about the tax impact, they're gonna be able to talk about who's gonna take on the debt and how is that gonna work? And they're gonna be able to, they're gonna be able to help us all with that. So that's why you'd rather have them do that than, than us just bringing our pieces of paper to the table, right?
And, and the process as well. You know, that's, that's the other thing that we need to just make sure we have the idea of. But you know, in terms of, when I, when I talk about bringing consolidation back to the table, what I'm really referring to is in terms of the agenda. Because generally speaking, that isn't something, because it's been decided, unless there's a change in circumstances, and to an extent, there is, right? We've had, it's a few years, decisions, you have new board members. We have, I think just the declining enrollment is enough of a change in the circumstance.
Global pandemic, that, how kids go to school, I mean genuinely, like, that's a thing too.
Genuinely, yeah. All right?
But I don't think, I also don't think we was focused on what we're doing right now.
Absolutely.
Yeah, we can do plans.
If we have that plan in place.
And that was something that we were really clear about in July, was to make sure that, yes, we, we're okay with having that discussion, but we are still full bore on our strategic plan. Because it's really good, I think.
I agree.
And a lot of work going into that too. Do you have direction?
I have direction, I, I know what to do. Yep.
All right.
I'm in.
Any, any last words, board, on, on the topic? Thank you, Sam, for bringing up that strategic plan piece. Anybody else?
Shout out to the Raptors basketball team, both of them. It's pretty fun watching them, both teams.
It is, it's, it's nice that they have.